Okay, we're gonna call the meeting to order. If you would all join me. And Mrs. Morin, if you would lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I think someone joined us.
I think so.
Janelle, are you there?
Hi, yeah, it's Janelle.
Okay, just wanna make sure.
So we have Janelle, and we have Rheta on the phone as well. Rheta?
Yes.
Okay.
They need time to unmute. Because they mute in between.
Gotcha, gotcha. So this is the first meeting after the election. So this is your organizational meeting. I'd like to welcome Susanna to the table.
Hello.
And welcome, we're glad to have you with us on the school board.
Thank you.
So I do have a couple of updates, but I think it would be prudent for us to start with the election of officers. Consistent with your board policy, I will ask for a nomination for chair. There is no need for a second. And I will ask if there are any other nominations for chair, and then we will have a vote for each respective... Mr. Cloutier?
I have a nomination for chair, if it's appropriate.
Please.
I would like to nominate Ms. Traipas for chair.
Okay, we have a nomination for Heather. Are there any other nominations? Okay, all those in support of Heather as chair, please signify by raising your hand and saying aye.
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 And because we have folks on the phone, we will do a voice poll, so we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Cloutier?
Yes.
Mrs. Dessen?
Yes.
Mrs. Vermakowitz? Susanna?
Yes.
Jared? Heather?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
And Rheta?
Yes.
Okay, congratulations, Heather.
Thank you, everyone.
And I will turn it over to you, but I do wanna give just a quick announcement. I did notify all of our staff today, who were in the buildings working, that I have removed them from the buildings moving forward. So tomorrow, everyone will be working remotely. This will be a challenge for us, as we continue to roll out our learning plans, as we're going to more of an online-type model. But the CDC issued guidance this afternoon, that no gatherings greater than 50 people are recommended across the country. And then, the president, during a press conference, said no groups larger than 10. So, out of an abundance of caution, our staff will not be in the buildings tomorrow. The second thing I wanted to share with you, and I believe Mrs. Morin had put it in your packets, the governor issued a... Do you have that in here somewhere?
It's a memorandum.
Okay.
You wanna see one?
No, that's fine. The governor issued a memo today, that allows for boards to meet remotely, and not requiring a physical quorum present. So I worked with Mr. Borget and Mr. Giralliman were involved, and Adam McKeon from GTV were starting to think about... We couldn't pull it off tonight, it was just too short notice for us. But what that's gonna mean is, we will physically still have to have a meeting location. You have to physically have a phone, and you have to have a place where interested members of the public can be present, and then be able to listen and/or participate. Adam's idea was that we might be better to do all the meetings in one location, at Town Hall, and we would be able to have everyone conference call in. So this is something that I think, as the COVID-19 circumstances continues to evolve, that we're gonna probably wanna be able to exercise that option, just so we don't expose any of ourselves to any undue risk. So I did wanna give you that information as well. So with that, I'll hand it off to Heather. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. All right, so I'll take a motion to approve the March 2nd...
Do you want to elect a vice chair first?
Oh, I'm sorry, vice chair, yes. A nomination for a vice chair.
I'd like to nominate Rheta Chaffey.
Is there another nomination?
Do we need a second? No, it's not a motion, it's a vote.
So, seeing none. Rheta, you were elected vice chair? Yes?
You won.
You accept that ex... Okay. So we'll take a roll call. Dan?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Susanna? Yes.
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Rheta?
Yes.
Okay, motion passed. Rheta is the vice chair.
It's a vote.
It's a vote.
It's a vote.
And now we need to do a secretary? Do we have to do the secretary?
No.
No, we don't have to do any of that?
Nope.
Okay, so we're done with officers?
Yep, you're good.
All right, so, now I'll take a motion to approve the March 2nd board meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, did anybody see anything?
No.
Did you get second, Ginny, Ellen? No issues, no problems, everybody's good? All right, all those in... Oh, we gotta do a roll call again.
Dan?
Yes.
Tim, yes.
Ellen, yes.
Susanna?
Susanna, abstain.
Okay, Jared?
Yes.
Heather, yes?
Yes.
Susanna, Janelle?
Yes.
Rheta?
Yes.
Okay, motion passed. All right, correspondence.
This evening, we only have one thing in the correspondence folder. It's a post from the Bartlett Facebook page. And this will be a memory for us, of what it looked like to have children in school. So, kids, working with a dedicated professional educator, doing something fun and enjoyable.
All right, accommodations, good news?
Ginny? I attended the Girls of Our City basketball game, that they played against Merrimack?
Memorial.
Memorial. What an amazing game. Oh my goodness, it was the most exciting game I think I've ever been to. And I've gone to a lot of basketball games. They... The girls played amazingly well. It was great, great basketball, very exciting game, and I'm so disappointed that they're not able to continue their season, because those ladies were on a roll. I can see that they've certainly put in a lot of hard work during this season, and certainly developed some really great team ball. So, congratulations to them, and I hope that they will get to continue at some point, because it was just an amazing game to watch. The fans were awesome, and the seats nicely represented by Goffstown. It was great.
Anybody else? Scott?
I have to tag onto that, because it's not often that we have a Player of the Year in any sport, and it's quite an honor. We have a few banners in our gym, but Kelly Walsh was... She was the Player, Girls Basketball Player of the Year, Division One.
That's awesome.
For New Hampshire. So that was just announced, just I think yesterday, the day before. So, she's a great player, and she's headed to Babson.
Babson, good for her.
Yeah.
Doesn't she have some of the records as most points?
She has the... Yeah, she's the leading scorer in Goff's Town.
Boys and girls.
Yeah.
Leading basketball scorer of all time.
Of all time.
That's impressive.
Yeah.
Accomplishment.
Not too shabby.
Yeah.
So I would like to just give a shout-out to all our teachers administration. Today, my kids had to get on Moodle, a lot of parents did. Teachers were trying to respond back to parents. I think it went well, considering it was the first day. So, thank you guys for all the hard work.
Teachers did a great job.
Teachers, yes. All our administrators, everybody has been working really hard, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Public comment, seeing none. Close it. Construction RFP recommendation, that's...
Mr. Gross?
You, Scott.
Hold on a second, I know it's in the packet.
Well, Scotty is going to get the...
It's gonna be part of the A&amp;F.
Yeah, well, Scotty's doing it. A&amp;F did talk about it, but it's a separate thing, so while I blab on, you can go through your paper. They did open up the bids. You have a bid, we have two separation in the project, and Scott has found his paperwork.
Sure. Thank you, Dan, for buying me some time. So the bid went out a few weeks ago, and we opened them up last week, and there are two parts to it. The first is the modular building itself, and there were three bids that were received, and that was to design, permit, furnish, deliver, and install the modular building. The bids ranged from $522,730, and that was from Skiavi Leasing Corporation, to a high of $620,000 from Ares Building Systems. The bids were apples-to-apples bids, in terms of the specs for the actual modular classroom piece. And it is the recommendation of administration to accept the bid from Skiavi Leasing Corporation for $522,300, I'm sorry, $730.
I'd like to make a motion, that we accept the bid from Skiavi Leasing Corp. for the modular building for the kindergarten project.
Is there a second?
Second.
By Tim. Does anybody have any other questions? Seeing none, I'll take a roll call.
Dan, yes?
Tim?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Susanna?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Heather, yes?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Rheta?
Yes.
Motion passed to accept that bid. Thank you.
So the second one was for site work. We only had one bidder, and that was John Neville Excavating. The bid came in a lot higher than what we had projected, at $682,810. It was not broken out. We had... We contacted, actually, our... The engineering firm, Stan Tech, contacted Neville Construction, and determined that they had included more work than what was in the scope. So if you recall, we talked about removing the dirt and fill from the Glen Lake project, and then trucking it over to Mountain View, where it would be stockpiled for later use to build a third lane, due to traffic congestion. Mr. Neville included the actual construction of that third road, that road, with the exception of removing the guard rail and putting asphalt. So, right now, that number is down to $450,000, and it is continually to be worked on. There's a term called value engineering, and that is what our engineering firm is doing right now, looking at aspects of the project, to make sure that it aligns with the scope of work. There are things that can be done to reduce the price even further. I will note that that is about $70,000 more than what we had anticipated, and we will work on that, you know, on that number. I should let you know that if there are any overages with regard to the project, we do have the ability to access our impact fee account, which as of today is approaching $300,000. Those funds could be used in the event of an overage.
Go ahead, Jared.
Scott, I just wanna make sure I heard this correctly. So the initial RFP came in for over $600,000, but we've already been able to get it down to $450,000.
Right.
And we're still continuing to work at it.
We're still going, right, right.
Is it the administration's position to offer an emotion for John Neville's RFP at this point in time, or do we wanna continue to wait, to see what we can get down to?
No, I think what, Scott, I think what you were... You're thinking was, you were looking for a motion to authorize the bid, and allow us to continue to refine the final price. Is that what you're thinking was?
And then we would come back to you to accept, you know, I guess John Neville as the contractor, but we're in negotiations, shall we say, at this point. But we need the authority to continue with those negotiations, and it's not uncommon in these types of projects to do that.
I'm not sure if administration needs further authority from the board, because the bids were sent out legally, they were received back legally, and I think administration can do a firm and final offer, and select that. And when they have the firm and final offer, they come back to us. Since it was only one bidder for the site work piece of it, it's not... It's not like we're opening up the bid, and somebody else can come in and try to scoop in. They had their opportunity, it's done. I mean, if you guys feel better, I think it's clear that we need someone, they're the only bidder, we're down to $450,000 going further, but I think we can wait, until we have the actual number. Unless we need to do site work, starting today or tomorrow, but...
Well, interestingly enough, now with schools being closed, of course, we don't know what's gonna happen beyond the three-week time period, but...
That is true.
I mean, we haven't spoken to Mr. Neville about this, but he could start, you know, taking trees down, he could start doing what they call grubbing and stumping, you know, so he could start this project...
Early.
Early. Which really would allow us, hopefully, you know, have everything all done and ready to roll for next fall.
Ellen, did you have a question?
Yeah, can I hear you say, "Thank you, Heather," that we had budgeted $380,000 for the site work?
Yeah, approximately.
Well, we speculated.
We speculate, that's, yeah.
We did a total all-in budget amount of $900,000. We know that our one-time fiscal capacity disparity aid is...
1.35 million.
1.35. So we know that there's more money available there, and we planned on, if we had to, and we figured we would, we wanted to keep the number as low as we could. We didn't want the number to be over a million, and we assumed that we would probably have to use impact fees.
So those impact fees are monies that developers pay for the expansion of facilities due to increased population, et cetera.
And if we don't use it...
Yeah, if you don't use those, you lose it, and this falls perfectly within that realm. So if there are any overages, there... We do have the... We definitely have the capacity to absorb that using those impact fee funds, which again, are not raised by taxation at all, and don't impact the tax rate.
So you don't need any...
Well, I'm thinking, if we wanted to start now...
Yeah.
I'm trying to think of the way to...
Where to?
So let me start working on it, and see how far we get. I'd like to make a motion that we accept John E. Neville Excavating, Inc. as our site work vendor. For the pieces that administration has accepted, within the price range that we've expected, and to further negotiate the price down, to a level to be reported back to the school board for final total...
Fixed firm price.
Fixed firm price.
I'm sorry, I didn't get that.
I'm sorry.
Fixed firm price.
Fixed firm price. Because there were things in there that were optional, that we actually didn't need, and that's what we need to spec down, to try to shave the top off. It certainly would be cool to get that third road, but that's not the purpose of what that $900,000 is for, for the kindergarten.
Right. So I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Jared's second, so we'll do a roll call again. Dan?
Any further...
Oh, any further questions? Everybody's good? All right, Dan?
Yes.
Jared? Or, Tim, sorry.
Big guy, Brian's. Tim, yeah, it says yes.
Ellen, yes.
Susanna, yes.
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 Janelle?
Yes.
Rheta?
Yes.
Okay, motion passed unanimously. So is that everything for that, Scott?
Yes.
Okay, so we're gonna go to our standing committee reports. Policy review, we met, and we have some first reads for you. There is a list of them. We're not gonna make any decisions tonight. Second read will come, if we meet in April. Kate has gone through a lot of these, we've seen a lot of these at SAU, but we just wanna make sure that now they're passed through to Goffstown. Denise will send out cleaner policies, so it'll be easier for everybody to read. But as you can see, they are background investigation, criminal background check, family and medical leave, other potential leave. Steve Borget was busy with policy regulations, technology, school district internet access for staff, and student use of computers, devices, and internet. So, it's a lot, we did a lot. Go ahead, Dan.
Just an inquiry, because I'm going to presume that the board and Steve Borget reviewed the school district internet access for staff and for students prior to our current situation?
Yes.
Would there be any additional items to put in there, to think about?
Good question.
Now that we are where we are?
I think that's a...
Look, here's Steve now.
He's like, "I hurt my knee."
You hurt your knee? If you could have a seat?
The other thing we could potentially do, this is just a first read.
Right.
So given that it's a first read only, Steve, you may wanna give some thought whether, to Mr. Cloutier's point, the use of school computers, devices, internet policy might need a little bit of flexibility or tweaking, or if the board approves the regulation creation that I had discussed last evening, that would allow us, you know, flexibility. Heather?
Oh, sorry, Ellen.
Yeah, my thought was, it's probably not so much policy, but as a regulation issue. And I thought we approved, do we have to as a board as well, to allow the superintendent flexibility with regard to regulations?
So we have to... Last night, you gave me the authority on behalf of the SAU board.
So we have to do that here, okay.
So we have to do that again today?
Is that on here?
Yes.
Yeah, that's later.
But here's the giggles on this, if we may. In law, when you pass two laws, the last one is precedent.
Correct.
So if we give you authority to modify rules, and then we do this one in two meetings from now, this one takes precedence over that one, unless we do that one again.
Cool.
Just to keep that in mind.
Or we don't adopt.
These...
You could hold off on the second read, but Steve, any thoughts on, given our move to remote learning, if there's potentially any policy alterations that you might consider? And I have copies of them, if you...
There shouldn't be that much that really applies, because the bulk of the pieces we drafted apply to getting parental consent to do things on-site.
Right, and we're not doing things on-site.
Right.
So do we need anything that's... Because I'm saying, I'm not sure if we're lending out laptops, or any of the cart tops, or...
We haven't quite gotten to that point yet.
Right, but if we do, do we have anything? Because normally, it says, "School laptops stay in school," except for the staff, who they're expected to move them around. Is that something that we need to...
I'm in the process of drafting a laptop agreement...
Okay.
...that would go to the parent, that the parent would have to sign...
Sure.
...in order for that to go out.
And similar to the one I signed, just to have this little bug.
Right, I wouldn't wanna send a $1,200 laptop home with someone without having something in writing from the parent, saying that we're gonna get it back.
Would that be a regulation that we would place inside with, along with the policy? Saying if they get barred or lent out, there would be some kind of form that we would have a signature available that, I mean...
Ellen?
We can approve policies and hold the reg... Not today, I understand that. But, and this is two weeks from now, so we'll have plenty of time for David, or whoever, to look at the regs.
Yeah.
But the policies can go, and we can hold the regs, but the policies can still be approved.
Right.
Because how we use them, and what we do for approvals, and all that kinda stuff.
Right, but by giving Brian, what Dan was saying, is if we approve the policies, then that supersedes us approving Brian.
If either of these policies was perpendicular to what we're doing, we would just not bring it for a second read.
Right.
We would just hold tight.
Okay.
Jared?
Just as a question, I remember some of these we talked about, I believe, at the SAU level.
Right.
Are these bringing us in accordance with SAU with these changes? Because we could talk about some of these...
You're all done in line with the SAU, but some language change to be...
There was some...
They're similar.
With New Boston as well, and that's where you tweeted, and you guys wanted to find out where is it that they tweaked. But we're all gonna be the same.
Thank you.
Yeah, they're all gonna be the same. So, and we're not gonna see this again until two meetings from now, if we meet and put it on.
The second meeting of April?
Or the first meeting in April, right? Because we have one more meeting in March supposedly, and then another, but yes, because it's two meetings. So it's just a first read. Is there any other questions on that? Thank you, Steve, for answering.
We're good here.
Are we supposed to have a policy review meeting on April 13th at 5:30 at SAU? I guess we'll see if that's something that still happens.
At this point, as we're thinking about committee meetings, I think we need to be flexible, and really, in the interest of public health, having more meetings than we need to is probably not wise for any of us.
Right. So, moving on to P and C.
P and C has not met since our meeting the first week of March. I do believe that we submitted the applications for recognition of the school board for excellence, although I know these were pretty trying times, so I think I defer to Denise and Brian, if we were able to get that in.
Mrs. Morin was able to pull it off, and she worked diligently to make sure it was... Everything was done and submitted on time. So...
And I'd just like to acknowledge that, given the circumstances, I think we shined in using video communication.
Awesome. All right, and you guys have a meeting April 6, supposedly, at 6:15 here at the high school, which will be determined later.
Yeah.
Right.
All right, is there anything else, Rheta?
Nope, that's it, thank you.
All right, thank you. See you, Ne.
We did meet. It was our end-of-the-year meeting, and it was a roundup of every school, who gave us a review of what's been going on in each of their schools. It was very interesting. Basically, we start at Glen Lake preschool, and go through, and pretty much see how everything kind of goes from one school to the other, and continues, and flows through all of our school systems, from kindergarten, preschool, up to the high school, and even flow. I'll be brief. It was very interesting. It was good to hear what everybody had to say, good about their school, the things that are going on there. I didn't have our handouts sent to you, because I'm sure there's a lot of going on into the office, and I apologize, I don't have them with me tonight.
Yeah, we can always revisit.
Yeah, I'll bring them to the next meeting, so that you guys can look at them. And basically, I'm really pleased with what's going on in our school systems, and what's going on in our leadership at each one of our schools, so. We do have a meeting coming up, April 13th, if that happens to happen, at the SAU at 7:00 PM.
Great, thank you, Ginny. All right, now we're moving on to building committee.
Yep. We... The full building committee did meet, actually, here, and a number of people were there, but as expected, it kind of wanes. This is an information, sharing of information in the Q&amp;A. Due to the circumstances we are in right now, generally speaking, in our school district, I'd like to ask the board's permission to suspend the building committee until, at least until school starts up again, whenever that's going to be. I don't have a date specific, but wherever we are, I intend to bring forward a full report before we adjourn for the summer, whatever that situation is, okay?
Right, so that would be suspending all building committees?
Building committees, yes.
Okay, do you need a motion, Scott?
I would appreciate, can I... I'd like to move that the board approve suspending building committee in light of the current circumstances, until school starts up again.
Okay, do you have a second?
Do you, do you want to make it all the way till September, or until circumstances change?
No, until school starts up again.
Which is, oh, not in September, but, because school isn't just technically, I'm sorry, I misunderstood. School is still on, as far as I'm thinking.
Until the kids come back into the brick and mortar building.
That actually works.
Okay.
Thank you. That's clear for me.
Okay.
No, I.
Hopefully, I wasn't the same one.
No, I interpreted it the same way you interpreted it.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Except, I was thinking September.
Until we open the doors again for the kids to come in.
Okay.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Dan. Any other questions, comments? Roll call. Dan?
Yes.
Tim? Yes.
Ellen, yes.
Susanna, yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Other guests? Janelle?
Yes.
Rheta?
Yes.
Motion passed to suspend the building committees.
And if I may, I would ask the three subcommittee chairs, if there's work that you want to be doing, you know, putting together whatever you want to work on, please go ahead and do so, but formally.
Right.
Because I know I'm still looking for some information, and that kind of things, but I don't want to call him Randy right away and take, because I'm sure he's just as straight out as you guys are, so.
Ellen, I would ask that you send out a blast to the entire committee about that, so that no one is caught off guard.
Could you do that?
I will do that within the next 15 seconds, because I am so thankful and grateful for that motion.
And as he's sitting there with his laptop open, I knew he would do it.
He's doing it a little bit too.
I knew that it would be done before we even.
I just want to do it before there's any, like a motion to reconsider, so I'll get that out.
Now, Tim, Jared, do you have anything to add? Because I know your chairs of some of these subcommittees, if anything you need to update us on?
Not at this time.
Yeah, no, we're, we're in a holding pattern, so we, we got through the modules.
Sounds good, so moving on to budget committee. Jared?
We were supposed to have a meeting on Wednesday of this week. Unfortunately, based on the circumstances that are happening within everywhere, we have canceled that meeting, and it is TBD on when we'll be meeting again.
And actually, I, I think the town, the select board met this evening, and I, I believe, one of the things they were considering was suspending all sort of non-time sensitive, statutorily required committees. So I think planning board, zoning board of appeals, select board, but I think beyond that, I think that the town is looking to cancel other meetings.
Heather, if I?
Yes, go ahead.
I didn't see it on here, and if it is, just tell me it's later on, but the module, the four classroom article passed, so.
Yeah, we haven't gotten to that.
Is that on there someplace?
Yes, we'll be talking about election results of new business.
Oh, there it is, okay, thank you. I just wanted to thank the public. Okay, thank you.
That was also the numbers we were talking about.
A and F? Dan?
We have A and F, and we met this evening at 6:00, and for you, we have an interesting motion, because I'm not just going to, a motion to approve the payments on, that have already been made, that we're presenting the manifest to you for final approval. Reason I said that, because we gave the administration the capability of making the payments prior to our approval, so this is in retrospect, all of these have been paid. Payroll and.
Ellen, second it, just so you.
Sorry, thank you.
Go ahead, Dan.
So we have payroll and taxes and the benefits thereof, $1,671,467. We have sped activity $5,000 and over. North Star Education for some tutoring, $5,488. Constellation B CBA Services, $13,350, which stands for?
Board Certified Behavioral Analyst.
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 Multiple students in February to the core, $10,00508. More B CBA services from the Institute of Professional Practice, $11,031. We hired Maxim Health for some Bartlett sped teacher contracted services, $11,569. And Burt's Tree a student for February of $8,559. General expenses, SAU 19, $121,531 for March. We bought musical instruments, those are grant funded, if you remember, music and arts, $33,067. The Goffstown Truck Center gets athletic transportation for $16,404, that's going to go down. Dead River for propane, $26,203. Ever Source for electricity, $20,329. Seacoast for that driver education we talked about, $6,000. Hussey seating for that bleacher inspection and repairs, $5,600. Apple Computer Repairs, multiple schools, $5,400. Amazon for those supplies and book purchases, $11,116. And Home Depot Pro Custodial Supplies, $7,734.
All right, Jared?
Just a question to the administration with athletic transportation. Now that athletic events are canceled, are we still required within that 30-day period for the busing?
No, this is kind of like an add-on.
That's an add-on.
So we don't need to have 30-day notice on this item?
Field trips, all those are add-ons.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? We have a motion, we have a second. Do we have any other questions on the manifest? Okay, so I'm going to take a roll call again. Dan?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Susanna?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Other guests?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Rheta?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you, Dan.
Thank you. We also talked about, remember we gave permission, Arbiter is the company we use to consolidate and pay the referee fees, and then we say, hey, let's bring on MVMS. We haven't ceded them for any money yet, and we're probably not going to, until we have some confirmation that the athletic activities are going to restart. Okay, that's just FYI. We have what they call, well, I'll talk about the MS-22 right after we talk about a budget transfer we need to approve, so I have a motion to move 30, and I'll tell you why after, $37,172 from, I think it's a maintenance line at?
The repair line at Goffstown High School.
At Goffstown High School, and transfer it to three of the other schools.
Second it.
Second by Tim.
The reason for that is when we went and we did those security repairs, when we approved the transfer and the money, we put it all in the high school, but we did repairs at all four schools, and so in order to pay them out of the, the proper location for where the repairs were, we want to move the money into the proper location. That's the essence of the.
Budget transfer.
Budget transfer.
Anybody have any questions on that? Okay, C and N, we have a motion, we have a second. I'll do a roll call again. Dan?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Susanna?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Other, yes?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Rheta?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you, Dan and Scott. Dan, is that it?
Nope, one more. I have the MS-22, which is the appropriations as voted at the last Tuesday. It passed. Scott and team have gone through some very detailed listing of all of the budgets that got passed, which includes Article II and Article III, and put them on this form. What we have are three originals, so if you could, as we sign each of these and go around the table, if you can sign on the same line, that would be great. Now, do we have to write our name on the left and sign it on the right? Is that the deal, Scotty?
Yeah.
Okay.
That would be good.
This might take a few minutes, but.
Print, print on the left, sign on the right.
Print on the left, sign on the right.
I'll just follow your, your lead, Dan, on that.
All right, thank you, sir. And that is all, I believe, except for virtualization. We are probably going to be doing some virtualization, given right now, the atmosphere we're in, students aren't here, they're out there. The only way for them to come in is through the internet. And we have geared the infrastructure for what normally would happen. And right now, we have a lot more, so we're taking big bites with a little mouth. And so we need to make, well, it's, it's food, and I, we have no food service, chocolate milk, I have to do something. So we, we need to make the ingestion bigger, and so even though, we, we just have to make it bigger. And so we're searching the budget for whatever you need. We have to react now. I don't think there's a motion that the board needs to do, but we're going to have to have a motion later on to move money, because I'm not sure if we have all the money in the right line where it needs to be right now. So if you have any concerns over there, we're bringing it up so you can maybe make your comments and concerns now, prior to us doing it to getting there. Does that make sense?
The, the only caveat is that time is of the essence, so.
Yes.
If this becomes longer than what, than three weeks.
Need becomes greater.
Then the need becomes greater, and in my humble opinion, I'm going to put out a number of $75,000 for server, and, and we have software licenses now, there's a lot of things that, that we have to do. We're going to see some reductions in costs. So if school year does not further continue, you might see a decrease in athletic transportation, co-curricular transportation. You'll see decreases in substitutes, because school is not in session, so you'll, I feel pretty confident that, that we'll have the money to, to do this, but this is something, and then in the worst possible scenario, this would be an emergency expenditure. We do have that contingency fund. If this is not an emergency, I wouldn't know what is. So in that particular case, I feel comfortable that we have the money right now within our budget, based upon what I think will be decreased expenses in certain areas, and it's something that's mission critical. I mean, I think, I think that $75,000 will, will help us to deal with both the hardware and software licenses that we, that we desperately need.
So does the board need, is some kind of motion that generically states that we support the immediate procurement of the needed server hardware?
You, you certainly could make.
Licenses and stuff?
You certainly could make a motion authorizing the business administrator and the IT director to begin the server virtualization and related software project with a budget transfer to occur at a later point in time.
So moved.
Second it.
Were you typing on that one? Because it was good.
Yeah, he said it very well.
Visualization.
Project. We'll look at the video.
Are you good, Denise?
I am.
And Dan second?
No, actually, Tim did.
Tim second, okay, I'm sorry. So Tim, any other questions?
Do you know who I am?
Jared, do you have a question?
Do we actually have key performance indicators that articulate that we have a degradation in services going on right now?
Actually, we do.
Yeah.
Mr. Borget can probably tell us. He was talking to us earlier, and that basically he's peeking.
And you have a real-life example here, because.
My kids are trying to log in.
Yes.
Yeah, so.
Nice. This is.
No, this is good. This is, this is things that, it's good question, so.
My, my 15-year-old was working on it, and he didn't have.
My kids didn't have problems.
Yeah, he didn't have any problems. Are you sure he wasn't giving you a line?
Yeah, right.
He wasn't thrilled to be doing it, but I read it.
So I ended up restarting that server four times today to handle load. Let's just put it that way. So every time it would hang, I would go through and restart the services and.
And it kicks everybody off?
No, it would kick, when I restart the web server, it kicks any connections and respawns them. And all the ones that are kind of hung up in limbo?
Yeah.
Drop.
Okay.
So this, on typical load during a school day, 500 concurrent users is high. This, it peaked at over 1,000 today. I started, so I started having issues when it hit 1,000. I reconfigured and tried to patch things up, raised the limits on the server, changed the settings. At 1,500, it started acting up again. I've got it keyed for 3,000. I don't know if it'll handle it, but I'm hoping it'll minimize the number of hits we're taking. We have, we're looking at bringing video conferencing in, because that's something we're going to need. I'm running it on one of the servers we're retired, because it's something that we're going to need. Now, according to the specs for the website, it says that yes, it'll handle it if the number of users that we need, but as things scale up, if we go to a longer period of time, and we end up being in a scenario where we're expecting kids to conference in for longer sessions, multiple sessions, potentially in theory matching their regular school day.
We need the bandwidth?
I need the bandwidth and the resources, and we just don't have it. I can do, we, when we designed our system, we designed it for, you know, off-hours staggered, not our student enrollment of, what is it, 3,200 or whatnot, all hitting it at the same time.
Plus staff.
Plus, plus the staff.
Jared, go ahead.
So we, we can't just add memory to, to get through some of these items?
It's more along the lines of offloading processing power. So the server has a couple hundred gigs of RAM. That's not where I'm maxing out. I'm maxing on processing power.
The mid-tier?
And I'm also going to run out of disk space. Right now, that server, I've got 50% of the disk space allocated, and kids have not started uploading work yet. Just to put it in context, and teachers have not started posting content, because all of these classes were not doing remote learning prior.
Nice.
So I have about 2 terabytes of storage space in that server before I have to look at attaching remote and external storage array.
What is the, what is the launch time, if you were to get the virtualization up and running? How long would it take you to get, to get it up and running?
It depends on availability of resources. How soon, so I've got a conference call with the vendor next week to look at options, as soon as I could get the conference call in with them, because they're all backlog, and it depends on how fast HP can ship.
Okay.
Did you have a question?
Hold on.
If I have to sit there, I'm probably going to be sitting at the server, watching the graph, and going, oh, it's hung, reset, play with settings, and try to finagle it to do things. I'm going to start shutting down non-critical external systems. The library check-in catalog services do not need to be running anymore, because there won't be anyone building. That should free up some resources. I can kill off a few other things. I'm hoping that as the number of students, they're not all going to be hitting at the same time, as that starts to even out, it will help alleviate. But once we start bringing those other services online, such as the need for conferencing, small group, large group, we're going to take a hit. So short-term, I think I can make three weeks work. If we're talking a much longer window, things are going to get interesting. I guess that's the best way to put it.
Ellen?
I thought I heard someone say we needed to do this, like, right away, but it sounds like it's not going to happen until we're more than halfway through the three weeks.
We, we need to plan now, because we don't know what's going to happen in three weeks. So in another week after they reassess, the governor comes over and says, by the way, that April 3rd is now April 15th.
Okay.
Now, maybe the 22nd, maybe the 29th.
Okay.
We are.
Maybe till the end of the school year.
We, we. And this is not something that we weren't not planning for anyway. We, we had to upgrade our systems. We're just going to have to do it a little earlier.
Okay.
The president himself said that, expect this to go on until at least the fall, so.
Okay, is there any other questions? We have a motion. You have a question? Go ahead.
Yeah, this, this is Rheta.
This is Rheta, thank you.
Yeah, and, and this is for Steve, and, and I know I've shared the information. Zoom is making their services available to K through 12, and we are, our college is using that. I've used several web conferencing tools, and this is by far the easiest to use. We have the same standards for FERPA, and, and I really recommend that you consider it, because there's, there's plenty of Zoom, of web conferencing tools out there. There's Skype, there's Teams, there's, you know, there's. But Zoom, if they're offering it to K-12, I highly recommend that you look into it.
Zoom is my Plan D. I have another one that we're looking at to host on-prem. That way I don't have to deal with the timeframe to get the privacy agreements vetted. When I looked earlier, there were only, I think, two school districts in the country that had a privacy agreement signed. And if we're looking at doing the guidance conferencing or specialized conferencing, I need to have that in place prior, otherwise we can potentially get into a lot of trouble legally.
That's true.
And legal agreements don't get signed overnight when corporate, when the companies have to have their legal teams review them.
Right.
And especially when they're offering them for no charge.
Yeah.
Rheta, did you have anything else to say?
No, I just want to share that.
Okay, perfect, thank you. So everybody, any other questions? Okay, so I'm going to take a roll call. Dan?
What's the motion again?
To.
You made it.
To authorize.
No, I thought it was.
You ordered Steve.
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Susanna?
Yes.
Jared?
Ellen did.
Yes.
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 Janelle?
I'm sorry, can you review? I didn't hear the motion.
Go ahead, Denise.
I think it was so moved, wasn't it? A molekill.
It was.
Ellen from Arkansas, motion to authorize the VA and the IT director to begin the virtualization system. And then I have to look at the video.
It's to give our, it's to give Scott and Steve Borget.
Authorization.
Authorization to.
To proceed with the server virtualization project with a budget transfer to occur at a later point in time-ish.
Did you get that, Janelle?
Gotcha, thank you.
Okay, so I need your vote.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Rheta?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Passed anonymously. Or, yes.
It's been a long week for everybody.
It's only Monday.
So.
I don't think it's.
Long week, it's only Monday.
Yeah, so we're done, Dan, A and F?
Yes.
So I know this isn't on the agenda, but I know Ginny wanted to just give us an update about the stipend committee.
We did meet, we reviewed our, our surveys have, have come in, and we're reviewing them to see what people are doing, how long, all of that information has come in, and we're reviewing it. We do have a meeting that was scheduled for the 2nd of April, probably not going to happen, so that's where we are.
Thank you, Ginny. All right, so we have an SAU board meeting on April 15th at 6 o'clock at the SAU. As far as we know, if anything changes, we'll let you know, but plan to be there, let Denise know if you can't attend. And superintendent report?
Just two quick things. Mr. Gross, I would ask if you could give an update on both the driver's ed classroom status, and if you could also give an update on the Austria trip.
All right, in terms of driver's education, we, as you know, we've had our challenges with, with driver's ed for this particular class. Due to the fact of the school not being open, and again, all of the issues that are surrounding the, the present situation, I reached out to a Seacoast driving school, and you'll, you'll also recall that Charlie's Driving School is also, is helping Seacoast in this. I apologize. Reached out, I reached out to them, and what they said was that they are going to postpone the class until June 29th, at which time it will resume. They, all of the students, they've already, they've had two or perhaps three weeks of classroom instruction. That kind of gets banked, as well as all of their driving that they did with the instructor. And then it will resume. Unfortunately, both Seacoast and Charlie's have been trying to reach the state. There's a couple of things that are not so great. They're not exactly adaptable, so they don't have. They're not exactly adaptable, so they don't have any online abilities, any virtual learning to do the classroom piece. It has to be in a classroom, bodies in the seats. And there, as of this point in time, there is no deviation from that. Should that change, we could certainly let those students know. The other thing that we don't know is whether or not the state would allow the driving instructor to take the students in a car during this period of time. Obviously, that would be a parental and student choice and, and the, the choice of the driving school. But that's, that's, it's a contract, that's between them and we're out of that. Our, our, our thing is just, you, you cannot use the, the space here. And I don't think that they're able to find any other spaces. And in light of, you can't have groups more than 10, I think that kind of puts the, the kibosh, you know, on that one. I have received a couple of inquiries about refunds. And at this point, that would be between the, you know, the parent and the, and the driving school. The initial contract was with Mr. Ross's Driving School. And I'll be reaching out to those parents to explain what options they may have. But right now, there is the opportunity, due to the emergency circumstances, to fulfill that obligation to the student. And I'll, you know, if anybody has any questions, they can, you know, reach out to me and then I'll contact them. So it's a little complicated and I've told a couple of parents to just give me a call and, and we'll review it. With regard to the Austria trip, the Austria trip is canceled. And unfortunately, there is going to be some, there'll, there'll be a refund, but it may not be as great as what some of the students and parents had hoped. We're currently working with the, the tour operator. And some of the monies that were, that were paid are non-refundable. So until I get a, a final number, I, I won't be able to share that, that final number, but still, still waiting on that. But I did put that in our frequently asked questions. So on our, our board's response from yesterday's meeting, we have on the website all of, some frequently asked questions. And both the driver's ed and the Austria trip are, are on there. There's another trip to Costa Rica, I believe, that is later on in the year. And that one is still up in the air. And it all will depend on, you know, how things change.
Thank you, Scott. Do you have anything else, Brian?
That was it, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, moving on to old business, election results overview.
Typically, after the March town meeting voting day, we like to have this as an agenda item, just if there are any discussions that board members want to have. I think Mrs. Vermaikowitz was going to thank the voters, so I think that would be important to do.
Yeah, and I, I, hopefully the board agrees with me and thank the voters for their support. And we did get the quad for the Glen Lake, which would be a huge help to those little ones over there in their education. So just thank you to the public. That was nice to see people who did come out and supported us.
All right, moving, oh, sorry, Jared, go ahead.
I know that my wife would like to thank the Girl Scouts for having cookies there afterwards. She did pick up four boxes and being a pregnant lady, she definitely appreciated that, that snack on the road. So I'd like to thank them as well.
I missed your daughter this year.
I know, she's not on Girl Scouts anymore.
And just a plug, I wish the New Hampshire Girl Scouts sold lemonades and not the other lemon cookies they have because they're not as good.
All right.
I would like to thank the voters too because I think they really came out and supported the school very, very nicely this year. The votes were really in our favor and, and I think the voters actually came out and were very good to the town as well. So I think we have to really thank the, the town for appreciating the services that both the, the town and the school give them.
I typically, I typically put a letter to the editor out. I can make sure I do that and I'll put it on Facebook as well.
All right, so moving on, now we have two second reads. If anybody has questions, we've done these already. So we just need to.
I'll move acceptance of AC and ACR.
Okay.
Non-discrimination policy and regulation.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All right, Tim? Any questions? On these, AC, ACR? C and none, I'll take a roll call. Dan?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Susanna?
I'll abstain from these.
Okay. Jared?
Yes.
Heather, yes? Ginny?
Yes.
Uh, Janelle? Reta?
Thank you.
Did you get all that, Denise?
I move.
And the second one is GBAA for sexual harassment and violence from employees.
Move approval of GBAA.
Do you have a second? By Tim? Any other questions, comments? C and none, Dan?
Yes.
Take a roll call. Tim?
Yes.
I said Tim.
I said Alan.
Susanna?
I'll abstain again.
Jared?
Yes.
Heather, yes?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Reta?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. New business, COVID-19 administration will address.
So just, I, I didn't plan to go through and present the, the plan that we reviewed last evening. But certainly if there are any, any questions, any clarification that I can provide, it would be my recommendation for the board to adopt the plan as the temporary regulation. And I would be happy to read that recommended motion for your consideration if the board is in support.
Was that the same as the SCU board one?
It's slightly, slightly different.
I might have it, it's just me, we had it in the forums.
I have it right in front of me.
Okay.
For Susanna, I know before the meeting you said that you had listened in. Did you have any questions or is this a good time to ask?
No, I actually don't have any questions. I listened yesterday.
Perfect.
I do have a question that I've been seeing a lot from parents. You mentioned absent, or attendance. Some parents are trying to figure out, is there a button on websites, on their school website that says you're here? Because some kids, some parents are concerned that if their kids don't do the work or if the work is not due for a couple of days.
Yeah.
And we need to have so much attendance.
The attendance piece is, is something that I think we still need to figure out. So for example, some of the assignments aren't necessarily due that day. The students are being, being given two days to do things. So it's going to be hard to timestamp when that was happening. I encouraged Betsy Murdock, who is our database administrator, to assume that there is attendance and sort of we would remove kids that didn't participate kind of after the fact. So the only fear that I potentially have, Scott, is our attendance impacts our ADM, which is our average daily membership, which correlates with adequacy aid. So, but this is something that I, I can't imagine any scenario where districts would be punished because we're all going through the exact same thing. So I, I would, I'm probably unjustified in my fear of how it would impact adequacy. But, and in fact, the commissioner, Commissioner Edelblue, did a press, did a Q and A session on WMUR this afternoon. And one of the parents asked about, they sort of weren't happy how school districts were requiring kids to kind of lock in and say that they were present. So we're still working on that. You know, really, it's, by me committing that we would roll out today, put a lot of pressure on the staff. So I think if we would have taken time to, you know, plan this, but I didn't want to wait a week. You know, I, I wanted these kids to, you know, at least have some semblance of normalcy as quickly as we could. So, you know, this is going to be a work in progress and attendance is definitely on the.
We want parents just to not stress about it because there are a lot of parents stressing right now.
Okay.
So just to put it out to not prove that stress. Tim, I saw your hand up.
The question I had was for things like occupational therapy or PT stuff that requires the IEP to be like refreshed every 60 days. What's going to be the plan? Should? The IEP is a, typically it's a year-long document, so we, we don't have to refresh those with that frequency. The commissioner has said that I, I believe that even though the governor has directed schools to remain closed and for us to move to a rela, a remote learning model, I think it is possible that we'll be able to run some of those groups. So we're not quite there yet, but there seems to be a lot of support for if kids are healthy and they're not having any signs of illness, that we would potentially be able to have them come in and still do some of those groups. And that's where some of that transportation might come in because we might have, you know, it could be speech and language groups. It could be occupational therapy. It could be school counseling. Could be, you know, a, a lot of different, I mean, really, because replicating those highly specialized individual services in, in a remote environment is, is really going to be hard.
And it would mean going to people's homes, which you really don't want to start doing.
Yeah, yeah. No, we don't want to do that.
Yeah, I know, you both had your, I don't know who's.
I just wanted to provide you with some information for parents.
Yes.
So our special ed director posted a four-page document. It's for both the Goffstown and New Boston School Districts, Special Education and Section 504. And it lists a, a lot of questions, exactly what, what Tim just mentioned. So I would encourage all parents and guardians to go to the school district website. We have a list of our frequently asked questions. It's going to be a living, breathing document. We're going to, we're going to update it continuously. But there is a lot of information on special education and other topics. Some might be, wonder why were we maybe so, like kind of generic in some responses? Because we just some, simply don't know and things are evolving quickly. As we do learn more information, we'll update it with more specific, a specific reply. And also, we can't possibly respond in our FAQs to every little question. So we're trying to hit on some of the, some of the larger ones. But I would encourage folks to go to our website and you can also, there's, it's a PDF version. It's also, you can scroll and click on hyperlinks and a lot of information there for, for the community to look at.
Perfect, thank you, Scott. Yes, Ginny?
I almost hate to ask this question, but is there a plan for attendance for ADM? ADM, I think it is, as far as the area agreement goes? And tuition payments? I mean, is that going to be an issue?
It's not, it's not an issue.
Yeah, so the, I, I think for, with respect to the area agreement, I think will be good. And, and really, I, I do think that the governor's office and the Department of Ed are going to be flexible about how adequacy is determined and how it's being, you know, established. I don't, I don't fear that that's going to be an issue.
Yeah, if I, if I may, when we do tuition with New Boston, it's really based solely upon a student, you know, what's the word? Withdraws from a particular school on a given date. Or a student comes, comes into Mountain View Middle School or the high school on a given date. And then we bill those, those daily rates. It's not based upon was somebody, you know, out for two weeks or, it's really based upon their residency and then when they moved in to and started, and started school services. And we are providing remote learning to all those students.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, Dan.
Do students have to log in with an ID and a password to get their classes and all that stuff?
Yes.
I would suggest that there'd be one way to find out whether the student at least was active. And that's one way of doing attendance.
Yep.
We can capture that. I'm hoping we can capture that.
Yes.
They all have Moodle accounts.
Now, how we can.
It doesn't say they did the work, it just says they took the time to log in.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a, that's a really good idea. That's how we track people. Yeah, I like it. Now, that would only work for the high school and some, some middle school, but probably not all grades. But it's a, it probably, it's a good start.
Yeah.
Could the students send a quick email every day?
They could.
In the morning to the teacher?
They could.
If the teacher has like 25 students, would that work?
We'll figure it out. We'll figure it out. We're not quite there yet, but we'll, we'll make sure we figure that out. And Scott, maybe that's a question that you could address on the FAQ document.
We'll figure it out, put that in. I'm just trying to make a little bit of levity.
You could put that at the top. Or maybe a watermark.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. In progress.
So you need a motion from the board. Do you want to read it?
Yes, I'd be happy to. So what I had recommended for a motion for both the Goffstown and New Boston School Boards was to approve the superintendent's emergency operations plan for COVID-19 as a temporary regulation to policy EBCF, Pandemic and Epidemic Emergencies, and to grant the superintendent or his designee authorization to respond at his discretion to changing public health circumstances and to allow the superintendent the ability to modify or adapt school board policy as needed with an update provided at the next school board meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Any other questions? Jared?
Unfortunately, I will not be supporting this because I believe that does need to have an end date associated with these emergency powers in order for it to be satisfactory.
But we're just not sure when that end date is. That's why we need to be.
We can always have a continuation.
Why don't we go ahead and put something on it?
Do you want to put like?
I would, how about 6:30, the end of the June? Because legally, until something else changes, we got to figure it out. So it doesn't affect next school year until we get back together. That be?
I like having a date out there. I think that might be a little bit too long. I think that we're currently slated for April 3rd and then we'll have a reevaluation.
Could you go a little longer because we don't have a meeting until April 5th?
Our next school board meeting is April 6th.
Yeah. What if, if we get together?
What if you did until April 3rd or longer if the governor continues with schools being closed and remote learning continuing?
I, or, we can put it this way, because I think our next meeting is on April 6th.
Yeah.
I would be happy to have until the next regularly scheduled school board meeting as well. I just, I think we need to put an end date toward time powers associated with these activities in any motion.
It's fine with me.
So April 6th?
I support that.
So April 6th? Is that the date you're?
It's the next regularly scheduled board meeting.
Well, we have one in Mar. No, we don't, we're done.
He's saying after the 3rd.
After the 3rd. So April 6th is our next schedule.
I would adjust my motion for sure.
What do we do if we don't have a quorum for a meeting because people are sick or whatever?
We can dial in.
I would rather keep it open so that we don't get ourselves into a fix because anything could happen between now and then. And we have what we need for open ended.
How about if we put the word successful regularly scheduled board meeting? Meaning if we can't get together because we don't have a quorum for April 6th, then it would be April 20th.
Then it would go to the next.
It goes until the next time we actually do meet as a board.
So that covers, that helps you with the date and covers if we can't come in.
Yeah, and we just review it again and give it.
Does that work?
I, I know I'll be, even if I'm sick, I'll be calling in.
Well, that's why, that's why using that terminology would not affect much.
Well, we, we, now that we don't have to be all co-located either, I think we have that flexibility, but.
So are you good with what, what we just said, with the, what Dan just said?
Which would be again?
Adding the word successful.
Board meeting.
A successful, at our next successful board meeting.
Right, which takes Ginny's concern out that if we don't have a meeting, then it ends and we're in limbo. So that we're not in limbo, it continues until we actually have the meeting.
Does that work?
I'm fine with that.
Okay.
Yeah, I would change my motion because I think that's a solid point on Jared's end.
Do you have that? Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, I'll do a roll call.
That's great collaboration, by the way, guys.
Dan?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Susanna? Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Heather, yes? Ginny?
Yeah.
Janelle?
Yes.
Reta?
Yes.
We're unanimous, thank you.
Thank you. There is no need to talk about field trips. I was wondering about that. No, no need to talk about field trips.
Not even the one in May. I guess if we're back in school, we can always.
If we're back in school and a trip in May can happen, we'll talk about it then.
So BCA Ethics Policy?
So this is something that is presented to you each year as part of policy BCA, which is your Ethics Policy Statement and policy, or Regulation, rather, BCA, which is your individual board member statement. And we typically send this around for signatures.
All right, perfect. All right, so the next is draft committee assignments. Denise did email you.
She put them in our packet.
She put us, yeah, in our packet. So Susanna, basically, we have different subcommittees go through. So, Susanna, basically, we have different subcommittees go through. She wrote when they meet typically and the times. So if all of you could do this and get it to me as soon as you can, because then I will formulate it. So I know everybody's kind of crazed right now, so maybe by the next meeting or two, you can email it or call me.
Or hand it in before we leave.
If you finish it now, you can hand it in now, that would be great.
Do you want this on?
As soon as we get this done.
I think you usually just sign the one. Yes.
Thank you. Our calendar.
So the latest on the calendar.
For next year.
For next year. As, as, just to refresh board members' recollection and for interested members of the public, we first presented the calendar for next school year in October. So we presented the draft calendar in October to the SAU board meeting. And at this point, the status of the calendar is that Manchester still has not identified their dates. So we think we have the dates set up. But right now, Manchester's calendar is still considered in draft form. Mrs. Moran has reached out to their district office, and they still have not adopted. So we have to adopt the policy, the calendar by April. It's quite possible that the Department of Ed will push that back a little bit. But as of right now, I, I think we're good. But we have had a year in the past where there was a week in Manchester that was different than.
That was last year.
Yeah, or last year, yeah, within the last couple of years, for sure. So I think we sit tight at this point, and we'll have to take it up at, certainly at your next meeting. But I'd rather wait until we have Manchester's dates firm.
Could we not? I was just going to ask, just, what is the reasoning behind that?
Because we have students that attend the Manchester School of Technology. Yeah, so otherwise it ends up that, you know, you could have kids that have to be in school one week in Manchester but not here.
Right.
And kids are dual-enrolled, so they're, they would actually be in school, yeah, it's just funky.
Dan?
Could we not adopt it and be in compliance with law and call it temporary, subject to change once Manchester comes out with their final? I would rather do that because it says, we got to do it by April, and I did not hear they're suspending the calendar for next year yet.
No, we've not heard that. You, you certainly could do it contingent upon alignment once the Manchester School District has adopted their calendar.
Right, and that way we kind of know, because the big things are the beginning, which is going to change.
That's what everybody wants to know.
And I think we're all aligned with that beginning. And it's the, the vacation days kind of in between there for February and April, that, that play, right? Yeah, so that if we do a contingent on that, does that make sense for everybody?
Yeah, I agree with that, because I know there's a lot of people trying to figure out vacations throughout the year. There's been, I'm sure you've been getting calls.
We, we have, and just, just so you know, a lot of school districts are really spooky about sharing a calendar until it's approved. We, we have given it to anyone who's asked, so if someone, you know.
It's a public document right now, even though it's a working process.
You know, we, we tell them, it, it's not finalized.
Right.
So, you know, if you're going to go book a, you know, although I don't think probably anyone's thinking about going anywhere right now.
They shouldn't, even though plane tickets are like $43 to Florida to stand at the gate that's closed. Because you can't get into Disney World.
Sure, Fort Lauderdale from Boston to Fort Lauderdale.
I would advise against that, even though it's cheap.
That's right.
If we decide to do this motion and we pass, is there a way of really highlighting that this could be changed?
We, we would do that, and we still, we still wouldn't publish it.
Okay.
We would wait.
There's no sense in doing it.
Right.
So.
Pursuant to law, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the 2020-2021 school year calendar with the caveat that we may revisit this very shortly once we know for certain what Manchester School of Technologies' calendar looks like.
I'll second that.
And that this won't be public, and this won't be published?
Well, it's, I don't, published for general circulation, but is available for anyone to review. Yeah, so the administration can hold mailing it out as a, as a firm packet at this time.
Ellen, you second? Any other questions or comments on it?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, Retta?
So, I, I know that, you know, as we're looking at the calendar, we're balancing a lot of elections, and we make choices about what days we're going to take off and not. I think that there was, you know, more than a few people that were very concerned about Martin Luther King Day. And when I looked into it, we're one of three schools in the state that don't take that day off. So while I, I'm fine with the calendar this year, and I think that we've got everything in alignment, I hope that we can revisit that when we look at the calendar in the upcoming years. And one of those three schools is the Virtual Academy. One, one of two schools. So again, I'm, I'm fine with this, but, you know, I hope that we, we can consider it and have a discussion as we look at the following year.
Okay, sounds good, thank you.
I would share that I had heard from some students that had wanted to come and give public comment that they supported that idea. I did share with, with the students that I talked to, I said, you know, the whole premise of being in school on Martin Luther King Day is instead of it just being a day off of school, that we have programming and teaching and learning directed towards the work of Dr. King. And one of the things that I have also been considering is if we might be able to build in a service element into that. We haven't really thought that through yet, but, you know, I, I hope people recognize that we're doing something that's, I think, different and innovative, and that there is absolutely, you know, no mal-intent in being in school on that day, that really, we've kind of gone a different direction. But I, I did want to recognize that I, I know that there were students that wanted to share that information.
Ginny?
And, and I half agree with you with that, like it's a good plan. But I also see the other side of it, where our teachers come to school, and they're here, and they have no childcare because their kids have the day off from school. So, you know, there's kind of a couple of things that, that we need to weigh in making those kinds of decisions, so.
Yeah, and, and I recognize that it's, you could argue it both ways. So if, if the board is more comfortable, if you want to have that day off, I'm, I'm in support of that. You know, I think we tried to bring forth kind of a different model. I don't want people to think that, you know, that we're not in support of the work of Dr. King by being in school. It's just the opposite that we were trying to accomplish, but.
Ellen?
You have two things.
Sure.
Personally, my own opinion is that I think we do more of an honor to the purpose of the day by having specific instruction that day, as opposed to just the day off. Not thinking about it at all, probably. You've mentioned April. Are we going to be okay with the individual teacher contracts? Doesn't that have to go out like April 15th or something?
You mean for employment contracts? Yes, we'll be fine with that.
All right, so are we good with the calendar questions? Anything? All right, so we have a motion, we have a second. Do a roll call. Dan?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Susanna?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Yes, Ginny?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Retta?
Yes.
Thank you, we're unanimous in passing that. So next is school staffing, notifications.
Yeah, so we have a number of notifications. We have a leave of absence for Molly Schellenberger. We have a track change for Jessica Gray, and we have a transfer of Christopher Belding from the middle school to the high school. Mr. Belding will be the new music teacher, so he's replacing Mr. McKernan. So they're very excited to welcome Mr. Belding, and the middle school is weeping uncontrollably to lose Mr. Belding. He's a great teacher and a very, very good and decent man.
And did you send a congratulations to Mrs. Gray?
We, if we didn't, we certainly will, we always do, thank you.
You're welcome.
For approvals, we have two teacher retirements, Bridget McNamee and Laurel Forsier. They have both been with us a long time, two very, very dedicated people. I had a, a great conversation with Bridget the other day, and she is as full of energy and enthusiasm as, and excitement as, as any beginning educator I've ever seen. So I'm very happy for both of them and wish them well in their retirement.
Move to approve.
All right, Ellen, do you have a second?
Second.
By Tim? Any other questions to accept these retirements?
With regret, please.
With regret?
Yes, please.
Sure, okay. Roll call, Dan?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Susanna?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Yes, Ginny?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Retta?
Yes.
Okay, pass, thank you.
Now, for this last section, I might recommend that you approve these with the condition that at this point, the season is on hold. So I don't know if those circumstances might change. I think it's unlikely. So I, I would say that spring athletics is unlikely to occur.
So do you want a motion to approve if?
You could approve contingent upon the season actually being available.
So moved.
Oh, Jared? I'm sorry.
Or whoever.
Yep, no, Ellen, motion, Ginny second, Jared had a question.
Just a question, I assume that some of these may be stipend positions? And if we approve them, and there is no season, are those stipends need to be earmarked and satisfied?
You know, that's an interesting question. I would say if the season doesn't occur, then the stipends wouldn't be paid. I mean, that seems, and, and they haven't even done tryouts yet, so these, these have not happened.
And that's why when the motion was made, I didn't ask the question, only because it was contingent upon the activity actually occurring. If the activity doesn't occur, how are they going to sign this? Oh, no, those are for referees, never mind. They still have to sign a pay slip saying, "I was there."
But if, if the season doesn't happen, then they wouldn't be paid for those.
Or they wouldn't be appointed. That's what this motion is. If the season doesn't occur, they're not appointed to the position. That's what I understand that motion to be correct, and therefore wouldn't be paid.
Right.
Any other questions? All right, I'll take a roll call. Dan?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Susanna?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Yes, Ginny?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Retta?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we passed. All right. Other business that may come?
No, just the, the only thing I might ask, Heather, is we will do everything to get set up for your next regularly scheduled meeting so that we can go remote. If people don't want to be remote, we could still have, we could do the meetings here. I think Adam's thinking was he'd like to set it up so that it was the same location at Town Hall. I just think it would be easier for GTV, because I, I'm not really sure how GTV's going to do this. It may just be an audio file that they would, and, and Adam actually thought, he's so creative, but he thought he, he might be able to do like a graphic so that if you, you know, if the chair is talking, that it would, you know, it would indicate that.
There are other meetings going on there at the same time that we're meeting here.
We could do a WebEx if we had a WebEx, and we could all have a video WebEx, where that's how it happens. You bring the screen down over here, we show it on the board. Somebody's physically here, the public can come, so we satisfy the law. And you just need a switcher that's available to possibly mute and unmute.
So, given the executive order from the governor today, I sent it to Adam and to Steve Borget, and asked them to try to think about how could we do this. I just, I think it's going to be important, you know, that if, if people don't want to physically be present, I think if, you know, given, given the fact that we no longer need a quorum present, I think we should take advantage of it. So we'll, we'll figure it out, and we'll have something ready to go. It may not be, you know, as, as nice as kind of a video type system, but at the very least, we would be compliant with the RSA and the order.
Ellen, you had a question?
Just a thought, this, we're not the only meeting, board meeting.
Right.
When we meet. And unless they have two setups and two separate rooms at the high, at the Town Hall, I don't know that they do. Seems like they're all in that one conference room. We can't do it.
Yeah, I'm not sure how, how he would do it. There are technically two meeting rooms over there.
The, the selectmen meet every other week, for what it's worth. I don't know if they're meeting more frequently now, but the select board, I'm sorry.
Dangerous.
It's, so there is a possibility that it would be perhaps alternating, I, I don't know.
But we'll, we'll figure something out.
So I have two quick questions. You, I thought mentioned yesterday, you needed a motion from us about paying our hourly.
Support staff.
Support staff.
So I did include that in the plan.
Okay.
I do think it would be, you certainly could approve that as a standalone entity. I do know, I've heard from a lot of staff, they're very concerned. And now, today, I announced that we would not have any teachers or support staff in buildings, and that we would be moving to a remote model for planning, you know, our contingency learning plan. So it's, it's going to be tricky and funky, but you've got a lot of people that are very nervous and reliant upon expecting a paycheck and want to work, but can't.
Right.
So I, I recognize that this is, I, I recognize that people could have some issues with this, but at least in the short term, I think to give the security to our employees would be really important.
I agree.
I would make a motion to continue to pay support staff their hourly rate, however it would work out. Somebody gets 20 hours a week, what have you, during this emergency provision that you outlined.
Is there a second?
When's it end?
I'll second, and I would just.
During the emergency, whenever the emergency provision ends.
Who made the emergency provision? I'm, I'm channeling Jared, now come on.
I know you. So what I would say back to that is.
Is that the governor's edict, or is that?
No, well, we, the power is granted to Ball.
Okay.
So.
That's, that, that I understand. Which is until the next meeting regularly scheduled.
Successful.
Successful.
Successful, yes.
Successful.
Ginny, second. Okay, is there any questions?
I need to hear the motion.
Sure. The motion.
Just really hoping you bail me out.
He's trying to get it down twice.
Do you want me to give it a shot for you?
It was, no, it was basically, I would, I would make the motion so that we continue to pay our support staff, or whomever is paid hourly, the, their hourly rate, however it works out. So, in example, if somebody makes 20 hours a week, they get paid their 20 hours a week, so on, so they're not getting overtime. Correct. I was trying to avoid using the word salary, because I know it's not right.
Their hourly rate.
Correct, so, until the emergency provisions, granted to Balki.
Is there, is there an end time to that?
Until the emergency provisions, granted to Balki.
It's already been clarified.
Okay, that was what we talked about before, okay.
So I have a second.
And I, I just want to make the comment that there are other districts doing this, so it's, it's not like we're out there on a limb doing something really weird.
The other thing is that the money's already budgeted.
Yeah, and there are other, other districts that are doing the same thing that we are, trying to keep, you know, our important employees and not lose them.
Right.
And, and be good citizens, I think, be good citizens, because we are an employer in town, and, and if we weren't doing that, there would be an awful lot of people in trouble, which is something we don't want, are there?
Well, just brought it to remember, it's where the governor's saying is the Employment Security Office would be opened up and then be available if that were the fact, but that was just an aside. The main comment was, but we can look for things for our, that group to be able to do.
Right.
Perhaps there, there is, you know, they can still help students, because, you know, those one-on-one, especially the one-on-one pairs, where the student is so conscious with, with that pair. Maybe the pair can call them, and if the teacher gives the class, maybe they can be on the phone with the pair instead of the teacher.
Help, you know.
I mean, things to that need.
They could drive the buses to deliver the food.
Well, not, not drive the buses, but.
It's a bit of a premise of remote support.
Yes, I mean, that, that's all that could, so it's not like, I mean, I would encourage us to try to find something.
We're, we're, we're going to need to figure that out. You know, I, again, there's, there's just an awful lot of factors and variables that we're, we're working our way through.
Any other questions? I have a motion, I have a second. Everybody good? I'll take a roll call. Dan?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Susanna?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Heather, yes?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Retta?
Yes.
Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, other, one other question I thought of, since you have now not allowed teachers into the schools, I know Mountain View had sent out emails speci, for specific days for students to come in to gather their stuff.
We're, we're still going to let them do that.
Still going to, because I know parents will probably be calling the high school and the Maple Avenue, so there'll be somebody at least at the front desk answering phones.
They're making appointments.
Okay, because I know Mrs. Kohler sent out an email for middle school.
Yeah, so the, the key, the key there is that parents should not go to a school without an appointment. Just do not show up at a school.
Well, Mountain View had certain, your last name.
Yeah, you have the alphabet.
Certain days, yes. So I just want to make sure since we just said no stu, no teachers, that there'll still be somebody there to let the students get their stuff.[1494.33]